I'd like to call the Adams County Cultural Council Study Session Number Two to order. Melvin, would you call the role, please?
Yes. When you hear your name, please answer here or yay. Jesse Martinez. Megan Hartline.
Here.
Roberta Aia.
Here.
Emily Burr.
Here.
Larry Dunn. Erica Hernandez.
Here.
Jim Toll.
Here.
Aaron Vega. That completes roll call.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the process confirmation, and I'll just go over this quickly. All council members should have their own flux partal up to follow along. We will not be doing screen sharing. Discussion will take place for each organization and category applied for and will be guided by our 2023 rubrics. Study sessions are recorded. Recordings will be available within two business days on the Adams County Cultural Council website. Please be courteous on the virtual platform. This is an open discussion, but we will call on any hands raised. Council members, please keep our, keep your cameras on throughout the discussion. And just a note to the public, study sessions are open to the public for observation only. Organizations will not have the opportunity to comment. Please keep your cameras off and yourselves muted. With that, we will move to discussion of our first organization, which is the Colorado Conservatory of Dance. And let's see here, I believe they are asking for two projects. That'll open up the discussion.
Well, if somebody can help me, I admit I'm still on a pretty steep learning curve. But this came flagged with a red financial assessment. And I'm not sure from my reading of the notes that whatever it was that got it flagged has been resolved. Can somebody help me out here?
This is for Colorado Conservatory of Dance?
Yes.
I, I can, I can help comment on that, Joyce. So as we discussed earlier, when we did the financial deciphering financials workshop, we, we told all cultural council members that we would either do red, green, or yellow depending on the financial situation. In this case, if you look at the financials, and because this is a public meeting, if you look out the sheet that I sent in the, the point where it has the asterisks, that is the reason why the financial, why it was, was coated with red. It was just, you know, cash poor, but that was just a point in time. It does not mean there's any reason to believe that the, the organization's in any trouble, if that makes sense. Because we look at the, oh gosh, why am I having a blank? The la la la.
Financials.
The, the budget, no, it's called something. Thanks. It's not coming to me, but yeah. Yeah.
So.
And the, and the whatever sheet. So.
Thank you for jumping in, you know, because I, you know, and, and what happens is that the SCFD staff, you know, basically wants to make sure that you're aware of the different things that are going on in the grant. And that, you know, in case you slipped over it, then you would kind of focus on that. Doesn't mean you have, as Dana said, that it's still the situation now, or if it's something that is negative, totally negative for the grant.
The balance sheet is what I, the word I was looking for.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, or?
Well, I won't say that answers it completely, but I, I'm better attuned to what we're going, what's going on here.
Okay, all right. And, and feel free to just ask at any time. So.
The more I learn, the more I might.
Yeah, it, it just really has to do with, like I said, that comment that was made on the financial summary sheet about their cash reserves. And again, that just is a point in time. So.
Right.
You know, you might get more insight if you look at the complete audit that they did.
Just a quick note, since we're pausing for a second, I just want to, Melvin, since your roll call, we do have Larry Dunn. We've got Jesse Martinez and Aaron Vega with the Florida Council.
Sorry to be late.
Thank you. And, you know, you're, you're really at least not coming in clear when you speak. Zoe, I don't know what happened if you were, but I couldn't pick up on you. So.
Is that better? Now?
A little bit. It's kind of like a vibration, at least on my computer. I don't know about anybody else's.
Okay. Thanks, Trace.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have some comments about Colorado Conservatory of Dance?
Um, I wanted to comment that beyond, you know, just the general financials of the organization, that the project was a lot. It's about three times as much last year as what SCFD supported in the prior year. Which makes sense. We're, you know, coming into a different time. We're expanding programming, you know, across organizations. You know, COVID is changing. We're, we have a different environment. But I just, I noted that it was a really significant expansion and that the project was really covering quite a lot of kind of varied and different activities, which made it a little challenging to assess from our grant making perspective.
Agreed. Yeah. Okay. Anyone else? I'm just, I'm just looking here at my notes really quickly. Anyone else want to jump in? They can. But I think you really covered it, Megan. On the second grant, though, that, you know, they are, they are going into seven different schools, which is great.
The, so this was funded last year, again, new member. So this group was funded last year. Not having that information right in front of me, just having the numbers. So when they talk about taking over operations for the performing arts complex, as somebody who manages a performing arts complex, I could see why there could be a jump there. That's how I read the increase in ask. Because if you're taking over the management and, or co-management and all operations for Performing Arts Complex, that adds a lot of cost because those are bodies, those are humans, right? That's less, I mean, it is a project, but that's how I, that's how I read it.
Yeah. That's true. And they are, you know, as well as co-managing the complex over there, they are also bringing in new and returning productions. So that is a handful for sure.
I'm going back to the second project. I just wanted to echo, I think it was Joyce, just, you know, partnership with seven schools, including a new school. So I love that they're expanding the programming in that way. And I, and I wanted to just comment, I appreciate the anti-bullying aspect of their, that particular project as well.
That's true. And also on site, just they are going to have some free after-school dance programs, which I think is great. Okay, anyone else? Hearing none, we can move on to Colorado Drag and Vote. And they, I believe, are asking for two projects. So I will open up the discussion on that organization. See, on project two, I think I'm in that they have asked for 100% of the project. So that, that's going to be amended down to our cap, which would be 50% of that, which would be 7,500.
And following on that note, Joyce, I also was wondering if they were counting with SCFC 100% of their budget coming out of, out of the, the grants, if they have any other sources of income that they can implement and then to make up for the remaining 50% that won't be delivered or granted?
Yes. Okay.
Reiterating from the last session, for projects, project one, for projects that are outside of the county, just in terms of resources that we're allocating, I'm not sure how, I know we had a little bit of a discussion about this last time, so I don't want to rehash. And for anybody watching this, I think it's public, are going to be public soon, the first.
It is public.
But in terms of Adams County growing, expanding, you know, we're adding, we're adding a lot of fantastic venues and opportunities for artists and cultural groups. I'm less inclined to fund, you know, to, to give high ratings for things in the first category, which is impact on Adams County residents and communities for things that aren't in Adams County. So it's just, it's, I, I fully understand that there is high value for events like this for people who, for Adams County residents. But if the goal of ours is, and then we have number three on our review, achievable promotion of arts, culture, science access in Adams County. So things that are outside of Adams County, in my view, score lower on those, on those qualifications. I don't know how other people feel.
Okay. And that's, that's perfectly okay. That's what we have so many of us, you know, rating it. I do think that they said they were going to, you know, have, they, they're anticipating 10% of the attendees will be from Adams County. So it's, it, the, the attendees from Adams County, it's rising. But I do understand your concerns. I mean, because it definitely, that particular project is definitely located in, in Denver. But they do, they have a number of vendors, as we talked before, from Adams County, as well as performers and the contractors that, at, at the festival. So kind of take that into consideration also.
So on that, trying to bring more, since the venue will be located in Denver and trying to bring more Adams County residents to the event, I, I was also wondering, like, what are their marketing plans for them to reach a broader audience here in, in the county? And like, I would like to see probably like their increase over the years of percentage of the, the residents that, uh, from Adams County, they, they attend the event.
Okay.
I also, to, to the point of access to people in Adams County, I love that project two is located in Adams County. I'm so excited about this partnership. I think it makes it really accessible for residents who may not be able to go to the Denver event. I'm just so stoked about it. And, and to the point of impact on Adams County residents, I think this is incredibly exciting.
It is, and it's new, and it's exciting, I think, also, you know, and it's very culturally minded. You know, we don't have this type of activity in the area very often. So I think it's wonderful.
Joyce, Jesse here. No, I think to Aaron's point, I think looking at, you know, just the conversations we've had with organizations that are doing applications for Adams County, for activities outside of Adams County. This is kind of a conversation we had even like last year about, or previous years, I'm going to date myself there, about kind of funding programs that are outside that. I, some of the recommendations we made in, in kind of these study sessions were to think about having like, you know, drag and vote, consider doing projects within Adams County. And this might be, you know, them taking that information in consideration and, and being, I think this is their second year of actually doing the, the drag and vote in Adams County at the lake. So I'm just thinking about, I think it's building that kind of, the connection, being mindful about that with funds related to Adams County. And I think they're being fully intentional of wanting to bridge that with funding from us as the SCF, SCFD Adams County Cultural Council. So just another way to look at it.
Yes, absolutely. All right.
Yeah, project two to me is a slam dunk. It's just in terms of what we're, what I'm looking for, for bringing arts and cult. And like you said, Joyce, bringing, bringing cultural activities that might be new to residents. What a, what a wonderful, what a wonderful proposal.
Great. Anyone else? Okay. We will move on to the next organization then, which is Colorado Fine Arts Association. And they are asking for just one project this year. So I'll just open up the discussion. So one thing that I noticed in, was that they're going to be providing the audience a way to digital, digitally request music in specific songs during their performances, you know, so they can request them, you know, and have them played. So I thought that was kind of interesting versus just in have, just having an agenda already developed. So.
Um, one point of feedback I had was that one, one of the things that we're rating on in our rubric is like achievable promotion and evidence that this project can be completed successfully. And some of the things I look for there are really specific detail. So for this, some of the detail that I was looking for, I, I would have loved more information on specific dates and performers. I do think it's really exciting to have like that audience interaction element. I think that's a great way to engage people.
Anyone else have any discussion or comments?
On the same token of clarity, specifically event type number four, I just felt like I could use a little bit more clarification, supportive events.
Okay.
Just adding a little bit, I know it's, it's sort of a longish summary and, and they might be concerned about us just, you know, having to go through so many. But a little bit of clarification on the kinds of events just helps me create a broader picture, a more clear picture in my mind. I, I'm also noticing in terms of their idea efforts or diversity, access inclusion, whatever acronym you prefer. It all seems focused on the future, so I wasn't sure, just in terms of the narrative, if what has actually been done to address some of those idea concerns. So that was just something, I'm sure they've done it. I'm just not seeing it, just as feedback.
Additionally, I would also like to see a little less dependency on SCFD. Their budget is 60, over 65% coming from SCFD. So probably trying to find other ways of income will be great to see in the future for them as well.
Okay. And again, I, I like the collaboration and bringing in, you know, looking at Northland Boulder and Brimfield to bring in their performances and to kind of highlight the South Asian side. I think this is unique in its, in its flavor. Anyone else have anything? I will move conversation then to Colorado Jazz. And they are requesting funding for one project. And it will be, looks like a three-month project. I just am kind of stoked with the project, just because I love jazz. And I just think it's an opportunity to add more flavor, you know, to the already music repertoire that we have throughout Adams County. So jazz is pretty cool to, to bring to, to, to bring to the area. So I think that's really good. You know, because a lot of kiddos, so any actually families really don't get to appreciate that type of music. So it's kind of fun.
Yeah, I agree with you, Joyce. I think the, the repertoire is pretty interesting, the, you know, the various jazz forms from different genres to be featured on those, on the concerts there in Parsons Theater. I think it just adds a new element of jazz to Colorado, especially Adams County. Gives some flavor to Parsons, bar, jazz, jazz there.
I really loved the whole application and what their mission and interest in pursuing in the future, especially their interest in expanding their educational efforts. And that might be something that they would want to consider for project support in the future. You know, I think there, there's obviously a want for that. And I love that they're, you know, targeting the Adams County area and would encourage them to look at project support in this area and in our schools here specifically.
I echo Emily 100%. I really enjoyed reading their application. I would also love to see, I don't know if they do translate their materials as they serve the BIPOC community and especially for the Latin culture celebration that they mentioned on their application.
Great. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm looking at their, their surpluses in, looking at the amount of money, their reliance on SCFD compared to their surplus. And how great that they have a surplus, but it makes me question full funding of projects if they're getting such a high percentage of their budget from SCFD and they're, and they're pocketing almost 20% of their budget or, you know, a, a large portion of their budget every year. Of course, for future growth, how fantastic that they had, they were able to get through COVID with some of those. But just, just from my standpoint, I'm seeing an ability as they increase or contributed or as they increase their fundraising, wonderful, awesome, they're diversifying their income streams. How much reliance on SCFD can diminish? Sorry, Lawrence, I didn't mean to talk over you. Didn't realize you had your hand up.
No, that's okay. I just put it up. I was just wondering. And, and, and we've probably gone over this before, but what is the ideal percentage that we look for, for someone who, you know, who is depending upon SCFD for, for a percentage of their, for the percentage of their whole project budget? What would be the ideal, or does it differ from, from applicant to applicant?
Okay, I guess that's me. This is Dana. Sorry, Joyce, I saw you looking up. That means you're thinking.
Yeah, I am.
But, you know, best practices says that no more than roughly, I mean, there's really no number out there, but if you look at different sources, it's right around 30% on one funder. And so if you think about it this way, it's SCFD is one funder. However, this organization is based out of Douglas County. And Douglas County had a very large surplus last year. So, you know, on one hand, yes, there is a high percentage, you know, it's definitely over 37 or 30%. However, the organization cannot necessarily be responsible if they were overfunded last year to make it go over that threshold. We're seeing a lot of this because there's certain counties, and hopefully Adams will get to that point. But organizations, because there is a surplus, is being overfunded, the amount that they requested. So just kind of take that into consideration that it may not be the organization's, and you can't see me because I'm off camera, but fault in quotes, that they're over the 30% threshold, which we would consider best practices.
I see. Thank you, Dana.
Thanks, Dana.
You know, one thing that may help them kind of diversify their contributors, I mean, looking at their board participation, they might consider looking for somebody that has some of the development fundraising experience to add to the board and look elsewhere. You know, they could expand into foundation support, certainly could grow corporate. I mean, there's ways that maybe that could balance out that they, that they might consider or already be considering.
That's a good point. Definitely. Anyone else? Okay. With that, we'll move on the agenda to the Colorado Youth Symphony Orchestra. And I believe they are asking for two projects. So I'll open the discussion.
Um, I really appreciated this proposal, including free tickets as a form of community outreach. I think when we're looking at impact on Adams County, like spreading it beyond just the performers who may be, you know, a certain number of them may be from Adams County, but then tickets for community members to see the performance, I think is a great way to connect and see the performers who are youth from Adams County. It's a, it's a full circle thing.
I totally agree with you. I, I think that's wonderful.
For project one, I, I, I see that they're doing lessons for students. It's looking like 120-ish students. Just wanting to, like, just insight for me, how many, like, contacts is that? How many sessions are like hours? It'd be good to kind of know, just to see how, how that, I know it's expensive for instruction, but just wanting to see what the impact might be with a number of hours served or committed to, or a number of sessions for that instruction for students.
Yeah. You know, really, that's a good point because this is a year-long project. And I believe there, it's two schools with approximately 112 students or so. So how many is really being impacted? So, but again, it's giving an opportunity to kiddos that really don't have a chance to appreciate the Symphony Orchestra or the, or the musicians that, that play.
Something interesting. I apologize.
Sorry, Aaron. Maybe just payback on Jesse. I mean, for me, looking at something of this scope, it's less maybe about the, the total number of students, but the, the touch points, what is the program actually make up of? How much interaction are they getting as part of those lessons and performances over that, the course of the, the school year? So, you know, I think that kind of impact, that colored for this application would really help us be able to score most appropriately.
And then they have a major fall concert over at the Pinnacle. And so, and all the Adams County students and their families are invited to the dress rehearsal. And I believe that's at no charge also. Aaron's got his hand up. Aaron? No?
Yeah, he's just on mute.
I was the first, I was the first one. I was the first, I was the first one, darn it.
Could do that ever.
So old, okay. For me, just to throw this out there in case somebody who wrote the grant could potentially be listening one day. It's spinning the project one. I, I personally love the idea of educational programming. I think it's really important as we talk about pathways and building pathways and how to reach into these schools. I think there is a, a yarn to be spun and I don't think it needs to be crazy, but how this extrapolates into the larger community, right? So yeah, it's 120 students, but I think there's always, I think if you could find some evidence about what is, what's the reach of the school that you're going into? What is the broader community that that school represents? Because we all know for every one kid in some of these areas, there's, there's a whole network of people that are actually seeing the benefit of a student that has access to the arts and is learning a skill like an instrument. So just for future reference, I think that's a, that could be a nice little nugget in applications that have to do with the student programming, because we are just looking at attendance numbers. So on paper, 120 eh? But, but the broader community and impact of this, I, I recognize and I can read between the lines. I think most of our, I think that our, most of our council members can too, but it's my two cents.
Can I interrupt just real quick, Joyce? So Erin, in terms of the numbers, I would, I would be careful in looking at numbers because 120 kids can be just as impactful as a very large event where you have a lot of people.
We're saying the exact same thing, Dana.
Okay, okay. And then secondly, okay, I didn't read it that way, but if we're, we're saying the same thing, that's great. And the other thing is just for the council, there could possibly be a small typo on the start date, which is prior to checks being received. So I'm going to guess and say that's probably the school year, just to put that in perspective. Because typically checks aren't received until sometime in mid-November, oh, sorry, mid-October.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Yeah, and just for clarification on my point, just the hours of like, you know, instruction or session just gives the, the breadth of like the, the organization's role impact overall. I think, you know, when you're thinking about a school year, how SCFD funds really do support that effort for deeper instruction, I think for classroom, for students. And it's probably just a portion of what, you know, is actually being served by the organization. So just really good to kind of connect and be happy and excited that we're offering this opportunity for these, for this organization to serve that many students with those sessions.
Thanks, Jesse. Anyone else? All right. With that, we'll move on the agenda to the next organization.
All right. It's like you opened a new PDF and it just all of a sudden started sharing it. You really don't have any control over it.
I wondered what happened, but I will.
Also, I'm, I'm doing many things at once.
All right. Okay, forgiven. Okay, next is the Commerce City Cultural Council. And I just want to highlight, because when I read this and I looked at the dates and so I, I called Dana and we checked it out and it's actually a typo in the dates. So we actually can rate this particular organization. So it's not this year, it's the following year. So. Okay. And with that, any discussion concerning them?
I would just like to say that I like the way, I like the, the work that Commerce City Cultural Council does for the Commerce City community and just the broader community in general with the concerts in the summer and bringing, being able to bring the community together in that way. And they always do wonderful events, even when I was there in Adams, 14. Being able to see the community come together, you know, there and, you know, through the celebration of music and concerts.
You know, and I was, I was looking at the visual arts request and I do really like the way they're anticipating these selections for the different wraps that they're going to have. They're going to be located north and south in very busy locations. I think to me, that's very good planning. So.
I could jump on the, the good planning. Oh, sorry, Erica, go for it.
Oh, sorry. No, go ahead. Make it.
I'll just say, Joyce, that I agree that I thought the utility box art project was super well planned and I really appreciated the phased approach and the community art engagement and creation process all coming together. Yeah, well planned.
Yes. I agree. And I also would like to applaud their efforts for inclusivity, having their both English and Spanish application for all artists. So that opens an even broader pool of artists that may be able to work on this project.
Anyone else?
Yes, Larry has his hand up.
I was a little unclear on their, on their financial stability issue. That's all I'll say. Can anyone, can anyone bring me out of the woods on that one?
Are you talking about their projected 18 and a half thousand deficit? Is that what you're talking about?
All right, yeah. I, I, I am and where is it? No, I'm kind of all over the place in this one. Let me see if I can. Oh, oh, in the application notes where they talk about their, their percentage of the org's revenue again. I'm just, I'm just not clear on how best to rate them if they have this issue. Does that make sense? I'm, I'm sorry if it doesn't.
No, it did. Go ahead.
I do think there's an opportunity to that point. They're offering free events, which is, which is difficult, right? I understand the lack of earned revenue, but the importance in terms of accessibility for these free events. I know oftentimes corporate sponsorships can be very handy in these situations, right? So you don't need to fully rely on, I'm not sure about their bylaws, but I think that's something that similar to other groups we've talked about, that could be an opportunity for them to, to sort of grow that revenue side. And it looks like they're not tapping into it at all. It looks like there's no sponsorship dollars that I'm seeing just on this corporate contribution sheet.
Yeah, same here.
I do think though, that I just want to second what everybody else is saying about the, I think these cabinet wraps are a great idea. I, I've got one question for SCFD for folks who are, who've been on this council for a while. How, this comes up with the art projects, how do we vote on projects? So our visual art reviews, when there's, oh my, I don't think that was me. When there's projects where we cannot see the art, right? So it's quality of proposed artwork is one of, is one of the things. I love what they're talking about, so I can guess. And then same thing geographic or community location in relation to other, so those are, those are two potential high scores, low scores. Offer me insight, folks, please, and thank you.
I see Megan wanting to answer that.
I can, I can speak to how I personally interpret this. I, I went through the same agonies when I was relatively new. And so I've, I've come to like, at least like my personal thing, but we can each have our own. So mine doesn't need to be yours. For this, I, I think about the word quality of proposed artwork in a number of ways. So, um, when I noted that I really like their plan for getting the community to submit the artwork, I'm like, well, that's a quality of the artwork that it's created by the community and it's a quality that I really value. So, um, like I think about that as, as one way of measuring quality versus if they were like, yeah, we put some clip art on the boxes and, and you know, like, they wouldn't do that. No one would do that. But like, that to me, I'm like, oh, well, they're putting like community input into the quality of the art. And that is a way to say that I appreciate the quality and I'm ranking it highly. And, and then when I think about geographic or community location in relation to other permanent art projects, frankly, I'm not looking at every art project that has been funded for the history of the council, because I don't have access to that. And so I do sometimes think about geographic location as access. Like I think about who will have access to see this art, who will be able to go and visit it. So I sometimes think about like, well, if it's in a municipal building, is it a municipal building that many people visit often or not? With this one, I think about like, it's geographically spread through the community in places where everyone goes all the time. So I, I sometimes think about like access with the geography. Those are my two cents. I would love to hear what other people think, because this is just something I made up on my own.
Let me, I will say, I, I agree with you in principle. I take exception to their claim that there will be 70,000 daily observations of this, because I don't think drivers are going to be paying that much attention. But it's still good visibility. And I have some questions about vinyl wrapping, plastic wrap boxes along the side. Unique, okay, but it just leaves me. Ah, that's how it leaves me.
So if I could just jump in just a little bit as far as the vinyl wrap goes, just I've got a little bit of experience with that, just because I'm on another board, you know, and, and there's been some discussion, but that's generally speaking, that is the acceptable type of wrap that they're using, you know, on those boxes right now and they're durable. So I can, I can just interject with that, to what I've learned. And as far as, and for me, driving down the street and looking at the boxes, I have to honestly tell you, I, I look at them as I'm driving, maybe, and I drive pretty fast, so don't tell anybody. But I mean, I do see them and I do appreciate them and I do pay attention to them. So I, that's, that's just my, my little piece here. So.
Not to jump into anyone else responding to Jim, but Roberta has her hand up and then Aaron has his.
Okay, okay. Roberta?
Um, yeah, like we've, I think we were probably, I'll toot our horn in Thornton. We were the first ones to probably do it around and we did, um, the, the first couple of boxes they did were painted. And they're, they were really cool, but it was kind of a disaster because our climate here in Colorado is horrible and it changes all the time. And so Jesse, our old, one of our old staff with the city had found this vinyl wrapping thing and it ends up being like really cool, because if they're damaged, like you can replace the artwork easily. So there's been cases where people have like rammed their car. The one I hear on Bye Bye House got rammed into because there was like a horrible issue and somebody crashed it. And so then they were able to just like print a new wrap and stick it back on. And so that's cool because you have the artwork saved digitally and you can just wrap it back up. Secondly, like the vinyl is just way more durable and color fast, like it, like doesn't fade. We had to actually have one, the, one a city council member on, uh, in North Glenn, I think his last name is Hata Mio. He was one of the guys who painted one of the boxes and he had to come back and paint it again in the hot sun because it was like so faded. Felt really bad that he had to come back and do it again, but it was, there's a few of them that now have to be replaced, are like repainted because the paint has fallen off and gotten faded and all that good stuff. And like as far as visibility, like I'll tell you guys, in Thornton, people love them. And if one of them gets damaged or moved, they're like, what happened to the popcorn one? What happened to the, you know, the lion one? What happened to the dog one? They get like so upset or hurt when they're, so they've become like a real like, like part of the community. So that's my experience with them. They're great.
Yeah. Aaron, are you still?
Yeah, I just want to say with the mural festival that I'm one of the owners of Colfax Canvas and Aurora. We are LLCs. We are not SCFD eligible, so I can talk about this. We partner with Public Works on creating wraps. There's two things that I love about them. One, they tend to have anti-graffiti technology on them when you print them. So not only are they durable and the color lasts, but if somebody tags them, you can, you can take that off, which is not the case with paint. They tend not to overheat the boxes, whatever technology is inside that box. Sometimes there's been issues about them overheating and it can cause, cause the technology to go haywire. And then the third thing I'll say is it really opened up our opportunity for different kinds of artists. Not everybody's good with paints and everybody's going to spray cans, but somebody can draw, design and procreate, which is like a, a design software on their iPad, create a high resolution image. Suddenly a graphic artist, you have kids, you have all sorts of people. It just in terms of accessibility of being able to apply for a project like this, it really opens it up. So it's great. In my opinion, it's great bang for your buck. I'd also like to say, I think the project cost is probably much higher than this, but the fact that they've got Public Works' support is huge because the installation and the maintenance. So that this seems like really good, this proposal seems like great bang for the buck.
All right. Anyone else? Alrighty. During that, we'll move to the next organization, which is Control Group Productions. And I believe they're asking for two projects. So I'm going to open it up for discussion. You know, I'll just kind of start it off a little bit. I just, you know, especially project one. I think this is really an exciting project, you know, and it brings a lot of histories, bringing for a lot of history for the area. I think it's very thoughtful. And I, I just, I just think it's a well-prepared and well-thought-through project. And I don't know, who would have thought about breathing healing into the banks of the sand creek? I don't know. I think it's great.
I'm familiar with this organization. I've worked with Patrick before. His creative, this group's creativity knows no bounds. And when you're talking about performance art, I know sometimes it, we all have our reactions to the phrase performance art. I think, I think this is a group that really, really creates a high quality product. And I've watched them through the years grow and the fact that they're taking, they took a production, they took a little financial hit on a production, knowing that then they could take it on the road and sort of spread the gospel of SCFD-funded projects across the country. I think that is, that's ingenuity and in terms of arts and economic impact. I love seeing that they have really used their dollars wisely and when they spend a lot of money, they are creating a product that's a little more evergreen. And that's, that's really exciting to me is that these groups are starting to create more evergreen content or a, a content that sticks around for, for a little bit longer. So, or, you know, they bought a bus and now I see that they're using their bus in multiple productions. And I go, that is, that's so clever. So.
I agree, you know, just going through the entire Adams I agree, you know, just going through the entire Adams County, yeah, you know, with their performances, multi-year, you know, and then they're going to have a gallery exhibit next year, uh, the following year, twenty-four, twenty-five. You know, I, I do appreciate the way they broke out the projects, so we actually could follow through and see how they were planning and what they were doing.
I agree, Joyce. I, I thought their, I mean, it was just, it was, made it so easy. Like you read it, you understood it, you had the full picture of what they were, are wanting to go after. It just, it, it was a delight to read the application. And I wanted to just say that I really appreciated the added J and then, uh, DEIA section. That was cool. I just, again, you know, this is obviously an innovative, thoughtful, creative, um, provocative kind of group. And so, yeah, why not?
Yeah.
Yeah, cool.
I, I just wanted to make a note on, uh, the project two, they do not have a balanced budget. Um, so just, we do like to see a balanced budget, so, you know, for the next time around, you know, to make sure that everything is the way it should be.
Anyone else? No hands? Oh, do I see, no, I guess I, there's a mark on Roberta's. I can't tell if you've got your hand.
It does look like a little hand up there.
So unless you jump up, I'm going to go ahead and move the session.
No hands.
Alrighty.
I'll just chase a candy skeeling, I think.
Oh, okay. Next, we'll move on to David Taylor's Zakar Dance Ensemble, Ensemble, and it's, he's asking for funding for one project. So I'll open up the discussion.
Um, I would just like to, um, I like the way they, uh, include the seniors on their programs too. So that's something we don't see very often. We see most of the organizations, uh, focus on the youth and the children. Um, so having this, uh, for seniors, I think it's great for, um, our residents here in Adams.
And I do see a strong collaboration between the artists and the, uh, art organizations, you know, throughout the area. And they did say that they, there may be additional on-demand, uh, performances. So, I'm kind of interested in seeing what that's all about. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move to the Denver Children's Choir. And I believe they are asking for one project also. Um, and this is another one, Dana, that has, it's a start date of July of this year, twenty-three. I'm wondering if that's a typo.
Uh, I don't think I received a response. I'll go back and check again.
Yeah, because I mean, the funding, like you mentioned before, doesn't even, uh, they don't even receive it until late October, November, you know, for the following year. And I think all of their projects were that way, as far as the dates go, so.
Dana, correct me, I mean, an organization can start a project and funding support can come in. And they've got a seventy-one thousand surplus. So, I mean, can they, can they start a project and receive funding after the fact? I don't, I don't know if I'm wording that question very well, but.
I think you are.
Uh, yes, and I mean, yes, technically, but the thing about it is, you know, SCFD funds that are given can't retire debt. So the question is, are they incurring debt that they expect to pay with the new funding? Or are they using funding that they have currently? And there's no way for us to be able to tell that. So that would be my only caveat to answering that question.
Thank you.
So that, that really leads to another question then, um, actually, you know, is this eligible for considering this point?
I will put it like this. Ten times out of ten is usually a typo. It's, it's grantsmanship. It's, it's, it's a typo. So, but I'm still going to look for it, but typically they're not asking for funding for, you know, something that happens before they're actually funded. So it's typically a typo. I'll, I'll look for that answer though.
Okay. Alrighty. So, you know, and I could, I, I think they do a great job, you know, anyway, even with start dates, you know, in question at this point, but I, I would hope, you know, everything, all their, um, as far as I could tell, their activities are in Denver. And I really would like to see if they could reach out into Adams County and, and possibly bring some of their performances and events into, uh, our venues here in the county.
I just have a question real quick. Um, just so you know, for future projects too, because I know like, here in Thornton, we had projects that were like the traffic boxes were one that were over years and years, um, is what I think I remember. So that can occur, right? Like you could do a project and expect it to be, or hope that it gets funded for additional pieces kind of type project. Does that work out okay?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think there's a distinction between visual arts projects and standard projects in the duration requirements from SCFD. A visual arts project, I think, has a three-year, um, potential for duration.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm still asking about that here at the city too. Come, I feel like I'm learning more about how that works, like, because I feel like we're working on stuff from years ago, still.
And I also think like, you know, the nature of projects and nonprofit work, like thing, things might go on for a really long time, but I think what we're looking for is funding a specific year-long section of a project, if it's one of those multi-year projects by nature. So they would say, for, for projects, not visual arts, but for projects, they would say, here is what we are doing in this time period, and that's what we're funding.
I do actually feel like this is a really interesting conversation because I think, I can think of a lot of examples. And the only thing that we say in our guidelines is that funds awarded in October twenty-two must be spent. So like, funds awarded in October twenty-three must be spent between October two thousand twenty-three and December two thousand twenty-four. This is the only, we don't ever say that the project itself must happen within that funding cycle. Um, but it definitely begs the question a little bit for multi-year projects and whether or not the council would consider funding. So I'm just going to add that to the list of things to discuss later down the road.
Okay.
But, good. Anyone else?
Hearing none, we'll move to the next organization, Denver Municipal Band. And they are requesting funding for two projects.
Yeah, I think, um, it's great that we have, uh, them doing some work with band instructors. Um, there's such a need, I think, uh, in the music world, uh, music education world to have, uh, additional support from, um, uh, organizations outside of schools to support, uh, band, uh, directors and musicians or, uh, music education teachers. So happy to see that they're doing that. I also like their, and project two, um, their work around seniors as well and, uh, being able to actually do, uh, a little bit of touring in the senior center sites to do some, uh, entertainment and, uh, offer their services for the community.
Uh, and I, I do like the idea of combining their workshops with small performances. Um, and it gives the opportunity for them to mentor of those kiddos that are interested, you know, in learning more, sitting side by side with them, you know, and really helping them out. So I, I love that.
In terms of a, an organization that has, I think it's so important that we retain organizations with long, deep histories. Um, I think that's really important for the society that, you know, speaking as a millennial, with society that is all about disposability. I think that's amazing and I love that they highlighted their history. Um, I think a trap that, uh, organizations that have been around in, that have been around for a long time can fall into is, um, a, a feedback loop. Um, we've been doing, this is the way we've always done it. And, um, I would love a little clarity in the future or, um, maybe a little robust plan of attack for feedback. Um, so I know they solicit feedback, but a little more clarity on how, why have they engaged in digital feedback forums? Are they, if they're doing things, you know, kiddos are on their phones, are you getting feedback from the kiddos? Are you getting feedback from? Um, because that's only going to help them. I know they, it looks, they've diversified their, what they're playing and they're, again, but just on one hand, I love the deep history. On the other, we all have to change and adapt. Um, and if groups know what's coming at them, they're going to be able to pivot quicker. Um, so that's just, I know it seems like such a small thing, that soliciting feedback question. Um, uh, but, but that's, it's really interesting to me. I can sort of see into an organization when I look at that feedback question. For whatever that's worth to the organization.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Well, we are halfway through the organizations. Does anyone want to take a quick break? Or do you want to continue? I'm.
Break, please.
Okay, alright. How about ten minutes?
Yep, my dogs are just being a major pain tonight.
No problem. Okay, see you in ten. Alrighty.
Aaron, are you there?
I wasn't, but I am now.
How much feedback do you get from old guys?
A lot, actually. Oh, boy. Oh, boy. And I'm one of them myself, so, you know. Yeah, it's, it's an interesting thing. It's, um, you know, just listening to, listening to all the different things coming at you. Um, I think it's important, you know, we've got a group right now, I'm going to turn my camera on, I'm sure they're still recording this, and then, uh, I'm going to use the Lou, but, um, in my gallery right now, we have the Colorado Watercolor Society. Um, you know, an art forum that is not super hip right now, you know, watercolors aren't the it art style. Um, their, their members are of a certain age. For the most part, they're very active and they're very interesting. But boy, oh boy, did they take the suggestions of how to integrate technology, you know, can we sell our pieces on the, on a website? And they sought out people who had that skillset using QR codes as part of their, um, you know, next to their art, because they're trying to sell these art pieces, you know, QR codes to link directly to, to decrease churn. And I was so impressed at, at how, you know, how they've just taken feedback over, this wasn't my feedback, this was just feedback they've gotten over the years. And for an organization that's, I'd say primarily seniors, they did a, they did a bang-up job. Um, and then on the flip side, to your point, I see some younger, you know, groups thinking they've got all the answers. And I go, you, you might want to talk to somebody who's done it before, who's lived a little. So anyway, it's just how you take feedback, it's important. How about you, Jim? Do you take feedback from young whippersnappers?
Oh, I take feedback from young whippersnappers. I, I enjoy it, but their technology is, is at times very challenging. And, and well, there was somebody was putting QR forms in sculptures and I'm going,
Yeah.
I don't think so, but okay, I, I look up one of those, I've got to go see one of those sculptures with a QR form in it, because.
Yeah, well, you know, Andy Warhol was putting film, film in his pieces, you know, and, and G Tube TVs. So you just, at the time, I think people were like, that's not art. So you never, you never know. Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bounce off for a second, but I'll be right back.
So you don't like approve, approve them, or say no, this one's not getting as much, or anything like that?
No, we just score them and send our scores in.
Oh, do you score them right while we're talking about them?
Well, some do, I, some I do, some I don't, some I sit here and listen to other people have to say.
Jim, I would mute yourself if you're having a personal conversation. We can hear you.
Sorry.
Okay, are we back?
Let's see here, we've got. I see, I see Jim Joyce, Dana, Megan, Erin, Erica, Emily. So we're waiting on Roberta Lawrence. Larry, sorry, I have you as Lawrence on loan. And Jesse.
We can wait a minute or two. There is Jesse.
Jesse's here. Yeah, you guys just wanna pop on, so we know you're here, Roberta and Larry.
So we do have the majority of the council, they'll be here shortly. Yeah, great, okay. Well, let's get started. I just wanna read this little note to the public just before we start. Study sessions are open to the public for observation only. Organizations will not have the opportunity to comment this evening. Please keep your cameras off and yourselves muted. With that, we'll move to the next organization, which is Denver Urban Gardens. And I believe they just are requesting funding for one project. That I'll open it up for discussion. Well, let me just start a little bit. Um, I, they've got fifteen community gardens in Adams County with. Over three thousand volunteers, which is awesome. Uh, you just can't get that many volunteers, I tell you, you know, so that's wonderful. You know, and I really think they, they really, especially in the. The economy and the way things are going, um, this is a valuable. Asset for our residents in, in the county, so. I think they do a, a great job. They bought in, identified, and they're working on five different areas that. They need to address, and they're going to be addressing biases and gaps in, in, in equities in. Some, in making some garden improvements, uh, which, uh, for physical accessibility and improvements. Which I think is really, really helpful, and they'll probably even get more volunteers if they do that also. I'm wondering about, uh, the start date, though, in this one. It says October of this year, and I'm wondering, you know, but. Gardening usually starts, ends in October, right? So, just wondering about the start date.
I wonder if that has to do with the tree project, where they're, they mentioned they're planting. Edible, edible thing, you know, trees, what the edible forest, I believe, which is such a great. I know it's branding, but man, that is good, that is good marketing. That is, that's a lovely name for a project. Um, I live very close to one of these that actually. On my view, that, um, that really does incredible work with our immigrant refugee populations. So for what it's worth. To, to the grant writer, I see your work firsthand. It's incredible. I can tell you care deeply about. I'm, I'm seeing the, I'm seeing this, what they write on paper is true, which is, for what that's worth. It's a, it's a beautiful thing that they do.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anyone else?
Denver organi- or Denver Urban Gardens is a wonderful organization. I took the time. To look up their YouTube channel today. And, uh, they have all sorts of. Wonderful programs, many of whom they, they, uh. Uh, they talk about in their application, but they, but I was most impressed with, uh. With their. Seeking out. Uh, Adams County residents to, uh, help bring the, the. The good things they do in Denver to, uh, to Adams County as well. I was just very impressed by them.
And Dana, Sam?
Uh, when this, um, when Denver Urban Gardens, when the discussion is complete, I wanted to say something about. Prior, um, conversation, please.
Thank you, okay. Anyone else?
I wanted to, first of all, say, I love this project. I love the culturally responsive gardening. I, I love what the organization is doing. Um, I love the community engagement. One. Topic for discussion that I wanted to bring up with this group is that some of this might more comfortably fit into general operating support. Rather than a project. Um, particularly looking at some of the construction projects with adding a pergola. Good, worthy activity, but, but is it a project or is it general operating support? And I think it's kind of. Unclear in this case where it's, it's not a construction project for a building to house the nonprofit. The garden is the thing that they do for the community, so I think there's some cases to be made either way. I just wanted to. Bring it up for discussion with the group.
You bring up some very good points.
And with a group, yeah, that, you know, gardening. You know, the, the project, we've talked about other groups in, in the previous study session about, are they cramming too many, you know? Are they actually five different projects in one thing? I, I'm not, just to be clear, I'm not reading that in this, because it is gardening. Um, maybe the, maybe the pergola, but, um, you know, the seed, provide seed, seedlings, compost, all of those things. Building extra beds. I see that as one project. It's just. Garden, fifteen gardens instead of one, one place, but they all seem to connect to me. But, but I recognize that we've, we've had this discussion in the past about maybe cramming too much into one request, but.
And you know, I, I'm. The one that keeps bringing that type of situation up, but I, I didn't read it. Even though it's fifteen gardens, I didn't see it as fifteen projects. I thought it just says one whole project, you know, so. And I'm, I'm close to having the, actually a couple different community gardens close to where I am, and they do such great work. You know, and it just is something that's so needed, and you know, the volunteers, I mean, they're. So loyal and dedicated when they go there and they're working. I mean, oh, my goodness. I mean, it's just amazing. All right, is there any other discussion? Dana, did you want to bring something up? Caught you, didn't I?
Uh, okay, can you hear me? Um, my apologies, council, I did receive, um, feedback from Colorado Children's Choir. And the program will be running during the academic school year, so. So the date would be basically from October until. The in, the completion of the school year, with some dates in twenty twenty four, June of twenty twenty four. Yeah, so. It's great.
Thank you very much. Input, thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
I was gonna just add a comment. I think just like as far as our applicants. Like I think being able to say like, uh, number of sessions or number of hours committed, I think. To the grant proposal could help alleviate that, that timeline, uh, if your programming starts like in the school, uh, year. Like it could be that, you know, uh, X amount of hours or X amount of sessions are gonna be, um, provided based on SCFD application. That could give them a little bit more, um, centeredness and, and focus on, uh, programming associated with SCFD funds.
That's a good point, and I think it's just a matter of. Maybe flux, and you know, the, the question that they're asking, and they're, they struggle a little bit about what date to put where. You know, I, I, I've thought about that, so, don't know. All right, anyone else? So the next project then we have is Denver Young Artists Orchestra, and they are asking for one project. And I will open it up for discussion.
I'm sorry, did we? I'm seeing. Dava, Denver Visual Arts Organization, did I skip one?
Did I miss it? Let's see, urban, oh, Denver Young, it's, it's the Denver Young Artists is before that.
Is before that, okay.
It's the one for just prior to it.
Thank you. Um, I like the whole mentorship piece of the whole DYAO. I think it's, uh, pretty, um. Instrumental, I think, having mentorship in, uh, just music education, I think in general. Um, I do like the collaboration with C, uh, CCD and being able to actually do a, a little bit more integrated arts, I think. Collaboration, I think, in our applications are like so, and Shriman, I think of looking at broader reach of community. And more impact around arts integration, so, uh, kudos to DYAO for their, uh, collabora- collaborative spirit. And being able to partner in a way that, uh, does deepen the work.
I'll just say ditto to everything you've said, Jesse. Anyone else? All right, hearing none. We'll move to the next organization, which is Dava. And they are. Asking for two projects. I believe that's it. Okay, so I will open up the discussion.
I'll just say I really love the internship component of this program, um. And I feel like this is one of those examples of. Um, I mean, this program is reaching quite a number of people, but also this is one where the impact is deep. Because it's a year-long experience, it's a paid internship experience for youth to get engaged with the arts. Um, so the, the impact goes deeper with the individuals that they reach in the program. Um, so I think when we talk about impact, I think this is a good example of deep impact. Um, one thing I was looking for, um, I would love to have seen, um, and this is just a suggestion for future iterations. Um, I would love to have seen the schools specifically named, um, that they're working with and partnering here. That would have been a good detail to enhance the application.
I volunteered with them many years ago, and it was just a really cool experience. They just offer, um. They just offer opportunities to kids that probably typically wouldn't have access to like some really cool. Products, like some really cool, like. Experiences like ceramics and things like that, like it's not something you typically have. A ton of access to as a younger kid unless your parents have money to like take you to special classes, so. I really enjoyed it. And I think they're a great organization.
Uh, I work directly across the street from them. And when they say they're close to the Adams County border. It's, they could literally throw a stone and hit the Adams County border. Um, and I mean literally, so. I think they really do ser- they really do serve, and it's, um. Their building is in a, is in a very low-income minority-majority neighborhood. And I don't think it's really, I, I would. For me, their. Financial stability is really. Is really showcased by the fact that they recently went through a, um, executive director change after like. Twenty-some-plus years of leadership. And I don't think they lost a single teacher. Which, to me, were students, uh, nothing dipped, which. In terms of nonprofit world, and especially dealing with kiddos and programming, and. They are incredibly stable. Um, and their jobs training is the other part of that, the fact that they service, they serve these kiddos, and then they. Um, like was said before, they take them all the way through to giving them, um. Opportunities with, with paid internships and job training. They recently taught a class on. Spray painting, because so many muralists are making really good money right now, um. So anyway, I just, I can't praise them enough. I think they're, um, they're doing incredible work and. I would, I would like to see a little bit more of. Tooting their own horn in terms of the change of leadership, because I think, at least from my standpoint, that shows real stability. I think too, uh, I think project two, right, uh, is kinda looking at a broad swath of programming. That is kind of all encompassing for the center. Just wanting to see, you know, to Megan's point before, like, are we including all, you know? All projects until one application. You know, uh, and just trying to see how, that seems a little bit more operations. So, operating budget in that way. It'd be cool, you know, if they were so close. There was like a, you know, a way. Fit within, you know, Adams County, but I know their location is their location for general operating.
Playing for GOS from Arapahoe. It's so funny, the, the different, um. Projects or program descriptions that will have different. Members of the council flash on that, because, uh, unlike the previous one we discussed it, I did not see that here.
That's true, you know, we all look at something, the grants differently, you know, it's really interesting. Anyone else? All right, seeing or hearing none, next is Elk Environmental Learning for Kids. They are asking funding for one project, so I'll just open it up. For discussion.
Um, I I loved this application and what this organization is doing. Um, wanted to call attention to the strategic plan tracker that helps them with accountability towards their DEIA um efforts and um engagement within their organization. I thought that was an interesting way to hold the organization accountable. I thought that might be useful for others, um, hearing our conversation this evening. Um, yeah, just, I I loved the whole application and what they're doing, so thank you for that.
I'll echo that, plus I I just really uh like the idea that they're part of GOCO uh right now in the Gen Wild Initiative. So we're getting kids outside, which we really want to do, you know, get them off their phones, uh, the computers and enjoy, you know, the environment, so I I think this is great. And it helps with the science education, you know, piece. And so that's a a strong piece for me, where they're actually immersing into their projects in the environment.
Just gonna pile on this love fest, um, I I agree, Emily, I thought it was a really super well-cra- crafted application that just had a lot of thought and a lot of strategy and a lot of planning that was shared with us in that. And I really appreciate the year-long immersive experiences. And there's an element that I think is really effective at impact here where it connects um with schools as a starting point, but then goes out into these nature experiences. So it's both being able to connect where they are, but give them an experience in a new place. And I just think that's such a unique element of the program here.
Anyone else?
I love that they are, they're considering the wholeness of childhood. I don't know how else to say that, but really, you know, I I feel like so many of these programs that I see are either just about elementary students or just about field trips or just about. And this really, it feel, it takes time to instill a love of something, whether that's art, science, math. Um, and so I really, I I really like the fact that they've highlighted a few times in this that it is from five to eighteen. Um, I think that's, that's really, that's really fun and it 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 helps me since it's been repeated so many times. I go, I know what they care about, how cool, um, yeah.
All right, anyone else? All right, well, next, next organization is the Evergreen Jazz Festival. And they are actually asking for funding for one project, so just open it up for discussion. So for me, I I did highlight something where they noted in the grant that they are collaborating with CM Dance to bring performances, which uh I think it's great to collaborate with all the organizations. Um, but then later on, I read that they, it was almost as if they they can't perform or coordinate or collaborate with CM Dance, they will try to find a similar group. And I'm just a little concerned about who that is and why they're they're suggesting that there's a possibility that they may not be able to collaborate with CM Dance. Um, so I I just kind of throw that out. And then I would love to see which schools that they would uh be considering having an assembly at.
I echo Joyce, uh, yeah, I was also wondering about the schools, they were very general. Um, so I was wondering if they were um aiming more for like elementary or high schools or or what grades they were kind of hoping to engage in their programs as well.
Anyone else?
Uh, I think that uh what they were saying in their uh uh, in their statement of the project is that um is that not that they wouldn't be able to cooperate or, you know, with CM Dance, but in case they couldn't.
Yeah.
Because I guess they're they're a fellow applicant. Uh, in case they couldn't, then then it seems to me that they could uh, or they would try to find someone else. But uh, I I I don't know if, I don't know if S S E F D has any rules about uh whether or not uh fellow applicants can uh can cooperate.
And uh, we love to see the collaboration, you know, in the joint efforts and performances, so that wouldn't be an issue.
I think the issue with this one becomes into play, which is both kind of what Joyce and you alluded to, Larry, is that um if they, if CM Dance isn't funded, are they able to do the programming? So that's something that you all will need to consider.
Okay.
Um, I just also want to mention, as we have with other groups, um, you know, just looking at their list of contributors, SCFD is fifty-four percent of their um of their budget. Um, and with festivals and things, I'm noticing they are taking tickets from a lot of things, um, which I, you know, for me is is fine, I I recognize it costs money to put on festivals and art. Um, integrating dance fest, you know, pivoting and saying, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna collaborate with dance groups and um and do public dances and things like that, I think is great. I do think there might be an opportunity, I'd love to see um, see that core, I I'm a big, these public events, I'm a big fan of sponsors, corporate sponsorship. I think there's an opportunity there, so it might be kind of nice to to hear from them in the future about how they've, um, I know they're a volunteer group, but um if they've started to diversify their portfolio a little bit and um just from looking at the snapshot of their finances, um, there's a really big, there's a really big untapped resource when you're talking about big public concerts and front-facing events, not every group has that opportunity to create a logo salad, so you have that opportunity, so I would say try it out, see, see what you can do. Does it, sorry, logo salad might be a new term, um, meaning lots of, you know, you've got your poster and there's lots of organizations that sponsor underneath it, you've got all those logos and those sponsors are essentially paying for their logo on that thing.
Okay.
I like that term, we need more logo salads over here.
Okay, anyone else? All right, hearing then, we'll move to the next organization, which is Feel the Beat. And they are asking funding for one project. So, discussion.
There was one thing that I found that caught my eye, we'll put it this way, could be nothing, could be, could be something. In their uh, in their list of venue names, they list Mountain View Elementary School in Broomfield as being in Adams County.
Oh. I missed that.
Good eye, Larry. Um, I wanted to say this is one of the most well-crafted descriptions of a project um that I've read so far. It was so clear to me exactly how everything would work. They they painted such a clear descriptive picture of like the logistics of the programming and what they do and the impact. They were really effective at conveying the impact of their program. And I think this is really innovative, engaging outreach in the arts in a, in a way to um engage a population that may not be able to normally engage with dance. I just loved um the, those elements of this proposal.
You know, and I also noticed that um they collaborate with both public and private uh partners, which I think is great to reach out of the box, you know, and start thinking into the future at all partners, everyone. So I I just uh think this is a great project and I agree with you, Megan, you know, that it 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 really does bring uh the accessibility to those that possibly can't appreciate it, you know, so, yeah.
On a personal standpoint, um, I I almost get choked up thinking about it, their their accessibility paragraph, I think, is inclusiveness. Um, it the facilitating autonomy and a sense of belonging through dance and music classes. Um, disrupting stereotypes and sharing what is possible through inclusion, so this, the passion bleeds through. Um, and I get a little choked up about it, I mean, I think the arts is such a, if you're working with education or you're working with groups that are marginalized, um, that kind of language and being able to articulate it so well like they did is really important because it, it does, it 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 moves me, I mean, increasing the representation of individuals living with a disability within the arts community, even within the arts communities, which is, I'd say, probably traditionally pretty accepting compared to maybe in the practice of society. There are even, you know, um, uh tiers within that, so um, yeah, just to back up what Megan said. I mean, the clarity of their passion, the way they wrote um creative writing in in grants. Well done, well done. It's not unnoticed.
Anyone else?
Yeah, we just had, uh, the school Mountain View Elementary is in Adams Twelve School District. Um, it is uh in the city of Broomfield, so I don't know the boundaries associated with that. But certainly, I just wanted to get some clarification on that. Um, but it is Adams Twelve School District and uh is, the city is associated with that is uh Broomfield.
It needs to be in the boundary of Adams, it's just Adams Twelve, leaves out, it was established before the county of Broomfield was.
Okay, anyone else? All right, hearing then, we'll move on the agenda to our next organization, which is Fiesta Colorado. And they are asking for funding for two projects, so open up the discussion.
I'll add uh that I'm familiar with Fiesta Colorado, uh Dance Colorado. Um, they are a fifty-year-old organization um and continue to bring uh Flaco Raco Dance in um Colorado and across even Adams County. I think it's great that they're actually taking over Armory to uh some programming and working through the library system. I think um always having representative uh cultural dance is great to be a part of our community and a part of kind of our cultural uh array of activities. Um, like I'm familiar with their work and worked with them in the past and know they always certainly put on a show uh in the community that they're.
Thanks, Jesse, anyone else?
Um, Jesse, I'll say that yes, like for from, to build on your point and agree with it, I'll say like that with this project, I was like, this is absolutely, there's evidence that it can be completed successfully, like this, this is a really solid program, a solid organization, um, a really good year-after-year event in Adams County. I love the partnerships. Um, and I I think that it it just is a really um well-crafted, very staple project.
Anyone else? Next, organization that we have is the Four Mile Historic Park. And I believe they're requesting funding for one project, so open up the discussion.
Um, I'll note that there was a discrepancy with the project request amount. It looks like it was adjusted to me, our requirements in the application summary, but not in the project itself. Um, I also, I do appreciate the specific details in the project description noting that Adams County students are the largest attendance demographic. Um, you know, Erin, I think you've brought up a couple of times like uh, things that people have to travel to outside of Adams County. So I appreciate that they really clarified for us how many um Adams County students are connected here. And I I think they really made a clear um case or a clear picture of what access they're providing and how that's reaching Adams County residents.
So to um go back to your point for the financials for a moment. Um, and uh, so I'm wondering which is the correct request? Because if it's for twenty-four thousand, it's over our fifty percent. Um, but if it's just a typo and it should be twenty, then it's just, the budget is not balanced, so I guess it
I can, I can answer that, Joyce.
Okay.
Um, the, the amount that shows up on our side for the the request is the one that's typed in the grant. So it's not the one that's in the budget, so it will be the twenty thousand.
It will be the twenty thousand.
And the twenty-four is probably a typo.
Okay, all right, yeah, because I noted that and I just want, just need to know which one is for correct. You know, and then I I really do appreciate the request because it really reduces the cost to the schools by almost fifty percent so that the kiddos actually can participate in some of the field trips, so I do appreciate that.
I would love to know which schools that the students are coming from. Seems possible potentially for them to provide that. And they're very specific about the numbers that are coming from Adams, so it would, I think, aid the application um in a sense of how far into Adams their reach is extending. Um, I I, I mean, I do appreciate overall what they've provided, um, but I think that would help.
Thank you, anyone else?
Yeah, I agree, um, the thing that I'm a little um, that I was looking at the project budget and the expenses related to to that, because I was wanting to see, they don't explicitly say anything about bus transportation um support. Um, and I don't know if that would be under the administrative and cons- um, or logistics uh budget amount or if that would go in the travel uh and mileage uh portion for the budget, uh project expense. So just wanting to see if that um, if there's any explicit like bus transportation support for that or does that assistance for field trips mean something else? Um, so any clarification on that would be very helpful, I think, in future applications.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move to the next organization, which would be Friends of Dinosaur Ridge. And they are And they are requesting funding for one project. So I'll open up the discussion.
I appreciate that they did list the partners from Adams County that were attending in the various groups. Um, I know based on the application, it does have like different type of group, uh, experiences and it would, it would be interesting to see not that, uh, it would be, for me, uh, as a reviewer, it'd be interesting to see what the touchpoint of that group experience would be. Whether it was just kind of the shuttle or, or there was actually more engagement. Um, when we're thinking about, I think, impact or, um, when I'm thinking about impact on the experience, um, you know, a walkthrough might be, um, you know, a good touch point versus a more, uh, in-depth kind of, uh, with a guide and, uh, maybe more of an experience for our Adams County residents.
We've talked, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, something else too that we've talked about, there have been some groups that have included vendor numbers from Adams County or, you know, um, talking about their guides, um, so not just attendance, but that might help too, is, um, a little thought in where their educators, their guides coming from, what's, um, yeah. I think that's self-explanatory. It could help in terms of making a case.
I was, uh, I was somewhat impressed by their, uh, tracking of the increasing numbers of Adams County residents that, uh, participate in their program. Uh, I think it might have been helpful to show what percentage of their total, uh, participants were from Adams County if they had those numbers.
Um, I think Dana.
I, I can support these numbers. Yeah, let me, let me, uh, go to their final um, grant report so I can let you know what percentage. Um, just for the new council members, the final grant report typically will have the information about attendance numbers. Where is the grant will tell you where the activity is occurring. So they're two separate things. So if you ever need any information about attendance, um, just let me know and I can get that for you. But I'm gonna bring up friends real quick. Hold on. Sorry about the awkward silence, but my computer's working.
That's okay. So while you're searching, let me just add, um, you know, and I, I appreciate the outreach in Adams County, but I'm, I was, I am hoping that eventually they can, uh, reach out into the eastern, uh, area a little bit more. I don't, you know, I have, I, I think that is an underserved community for this type of project. So.
So, um, the information is, um, six thousand two hundred and forty-five, um, six thousand two hundred and forty-five, um, attendees from Adams County.
Last year.
Correct.
Okay.
Translates about three, a little over three percent of total.
So and they're anticipating about a little over thirteen hundred or little under fourteen hundred attendees this year from Adams County? Approximately.
Which, which I would say, um, you know, if you're, I, I appreciate the, the, um, the reduced ticket prices and things, they go into those, they go into those metrics and things. I'm, I, I have a broken record, man. I'm so sorry. Transportation, um, so our, so our most underserved communities, if you real, I really think that is a great way, if there's funding being offered, um, if we can see that they're working to transport students, peoples to that location. Um, for me, I go, well, that's great. The money's there. Ask for it. Um, so I, I appreciate that they're tracking the metrics and I know what's going on, um, just in terms of our impact on Adam, our number, our, in our review, project review criteria, the number one question, impact on Adams County residents and communities. If folks want to see that number grow, if groups want to see that number grow and they have the opportunity to maybe include some transportation in that. Um, I think that could really help just slice into some of the communities that are most underserved, which tend to be the IPOC, right? So just, just want to encourage folks to think outside the box in terms of how they're, they're bringing people in.
I'd like to piggyback off of you too, Erin. Um, I think even the recommendations, it's such a great place to go visit, you know, and, and see some fossils. Um, but is there any like, uh, extension opportunities from like Dinosaur Ridge to like to schools where, you know, they take some fossils to schools or do some educational components in that way? Um, I think as a county, like, uh, as we look to think about like our impact and the impact of, uh, Adams County residents, it would be interesting to see uh, even more additional data maybe, um, on these, uh, organizations or, and these organizations on these, yeah. Uh, that they're serving or schools. Uh, I know they're making a more concerted effort around Spanish translation of their audio and, and so forth. It'd be interesting to see out of the, the six thousand participants, like, were there any that were received, you know, Spanish language, you know, um, support or uh, a little bit more, uh, details regarding the impact of Adams County residents and their interaction with, um, uh, Dinosaur Ridge in that way. So thinking about D E I A and, uh, those extensions to really think about how they're serving, uh, Adams County residents in that way.
Thanks, Jesse. Anyone else? All righty. Next organization is Grand Design. And they are asking funding for one project. So I'll open up the discussion for Grand Design.
Um, kudos to this organization for bringing a program back after it had to be on hiatus after a few years. Um, so given that they're in the process of building back up and re-upping, I still would have loved to see any more detail possible on, um, like class titles, class content, um, the enrollment process, just a little, a little more firm detail, um, even where some of it might be question mark pending, um, but, but some, some more information. And with that, um, I have to sign off, y'all. I'll see you next time.
All righty. Any other discussion?
Um, I, I do, I, I do know this group, um, and I will say that I think they've done a really great job. They were sort of quiet for a while and they are, they're really coming back in meaningful ways. They're finding a lot of community support. Um, Dr. Bannister is sort of a titan in Colorado. Um, uh, um, civil rights and, and the struggle for civil rights. Um, she was instrumental in that. Um, so there's deep history and connection, personal history and connection. So, um, yeah.
You know, and, and I do like the idea that, um, and you don't see very often the collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club. Um, I really think that's a, a great opportunity, um, that you just don't want to miss and, and it folk, and their, their focus, which, uh, is admirable, I believe, is focuses on disciplinary training, uh, in, in doing it in the various types of music and dance and, and so I, I, and I have gone to some of their concerts and some of their venues and, uh, truly, uh, they do a lot with these at-risk youth. I really think they do an admirable job.
I would just mention, I think, um, you know, as they begin to kind of, um, reemerge and kind of, uh, do programming in the community. Um, I know that they are, that a part of their budget is looking at marketing and, uh, communication efforts. Um, just wanting to, um, just, you know, give some thoughts around marketing and communications with, uh, interpretation or translation. So I know it's probably a, uh, rich and diverse, uh, community that, uh, they're serving around that, um, around Aurora and Denver border. Um, so wanting to see if there's uh, any efforts being done to really think about translation, um, to market and advertise their program.
Anyone else? All right, with that, we have completed, um, our study session for our organizations for this evening. Is there anything from uh, the group that you want to share or ask or before we adjourn? No? All right.
Actually, Joyce, I just will say thank you. It was good conversation. I wasn't able to, to participate last week and just really liked seeing, um, and hearing from everybody. So thank you.
You're welcome. I'm glad you're back this week.
I have one thing to share with.
Dana, okay.
Um, and as it pertains to, cause I think it came up, um, the last session that I was absent about events that happen in church and we do, S E F D staff does provide information on that in the grant application directions, which basically says that it is acceptable to use churches, synagogues and other places of worship as venues when an activity takes place outside of worship services and is advertised to the general public, not just to the congregation.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to be clear about that. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Now's the time. All right. With that, I will see you next week and we are adjourned. Have a great week.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, all.
Thanks, everybody.
Great conversation.
Bye.